Please rise to salute the flag.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening, anyone. We would now start our 7:00 PM regularly scheduled meeting. The clerk will call a roll.
Councilor Vido, absent. Councilor Abadana.
Present.
Councilor Coopero.
Yeah.
Councilor Garcia.
Present.
Councilor Vega Maldonado.
Present.
Councilor Robertson.
Yeah.
Councilor Rodriguez.
Yeah.
Councilor Taylor. Councilor Lopez.
Yeah.
Councilor Brown.
Yeah.
And Councilor Zabit.
Present.
Ten members present have a call.
At this time, I will now open up the public hearing. We have a public hearing on zoning amendments. The city council is holding a public hearing regarding proposed zoning amendments. And we have the first public hearing is on the R1 district. A change in the minimum lot size dwelling to 3,100 square feet. Change the minimum lot size to 6,000 square feet and allow three family dwellings by special permit. If you are here to discuss only the R1 district amendments, please come up, state your name, your address. You have five minutes.
Good evening. My name is Kathleen Clark and I've resided at 73 Warren Ave since June 30th, 1994. Since that time, I have only needed to come to the city council prior to tonight, once previously. And ironically, it was for the same property at 80 Warren Ave. I'm not sure if all of you are aware, but the residents of Warren Ave have appeared before you in the fall of 2018, hoping for your vote to allow us the opportunity to move past the tragedy that rocked our neighborhood on May 22nd, 2017. Fortunately, you were able to help us by allowing funds to be allocated for the demolition. We appear before you now, hoping you can help us in this regard also. My family and I have suffered personal mental trauma and anguish over this property, as we were the family who safely sheltered the two females of that property, resulting in our own experience of the firearm. Never in my life will I ever mentally forget this experience and the feelings I felt that night. And not only then, but still to this day, as this property continues to negatively impact our lives. I wonder when the day will come that our neighborhood can once and for all experience the tranquility that we once had prior to this event. And if the members of the city council will agree that the residents of Warren Ave have already suffered enough. It is sad to hear that our member of our hometown city council, who was elected by the residents to protect and preserve our best interests, is the proposer of such a change. One that would take away our lawfully acquired property results, excuse me, property rights, by changing the zoning laws that have always applied to the properties in our neighborhood. It is inconceivable to me that our council members would ever allow such an arbitrary and misguided change to take effect and one that hurts its residents. Years back, when Chelsea was considered one of the worst cities, and I'm sure you can all remember those times if you grew up here, most were running away from Chelsea. We, the residents of Warren Ave, chose to stay in our neighborhood. Years ago, you couldn't give away property in Chelsea. But we remained and we were proud to say that we were residents of Chelsea. Fast forward, now we have investors who are starving to come into our neighborhood and turn it completely upside down, for one reason and one reason only: profit. Not only the investors, but I also received a 27-minute harassing phone call from the Realtor who was trying to sell the property for $550,000 at 80 Warren Ave. Not only did she not take my opinion, she then turned herself to call my husband and harassed him for 18 minutes on the phone. Trying to persuade us and tell us she knew what was in our best interest for us and how we're gonna make out. I told her she doesn't know what was in our best interest, but only she and her client are concerned about a big paycheck. It seems to me that those that have the power to make a difference in the lives of the people, who had the confidence in them by voting for them, sometimes their main focus and obligation is not to help the constituents. I ask that you prove to the residents of Warren Ave that you do hear our voices and that our lives do matter to you, and you oppose this proposal. I would further like to enter into the record 51 signatures from residents of Warren Ave that have also approved the opposing of this proposal. Thank you.
How you doing? My name is William Clark. I'm Kathy's husband. I live at 73 Warren Ave in Saltstone. You know, the Realtor that came to us the other day and told us that it was best for us, well, I'm gonna tell you something. I don't plan on going anywhere. I live in a perfect street. My street is perfect. My neighbors are unbelievable, the best you could ever ask for. It's a nice, quiet street. It was a lot quieter before this incident happened. But now, they wanna change everything. I was at the city hall at one time and I wanted to put a third-floor apartment on my house for my son, and they told me that it wasn't zoned for a three-family. The young lady down the street that bought 41, she wanted to make it a two-family and she was told that the zoning laws, where she was not to build a two-family. But now, all of a sudden, we have this Realtor coming in, wants to build three families, or two double families. Come on. You guys, we vote for you guys. We vote because we hope that you will do the right thing for us. This is a disaster. First of all, it's a very small street. If you're gonna put three families up there, you're gonna have 15 more cars, more traffic. Why would you wanna do that? The guy, the people that invest in the money, they don't care about us. All they care about is how much money they're gonna put in pocket. They don't care about the residents of the city. They all care about how much money they're gonna put in their pocket and that's it. Then they're gone. And they don't have to deal with it after that, because they walked away with all the money. So I'm up here to ask you, all of you, ladies and gentlemen, stick with us. Keep our city. Keep it nice. People, we have wonderful people who live in this city that are here to stay. We're not going anywhere. But if you keep adding and adding and adding, the school system's gonna be overloaded, the sewer system, they're like, all these things are gonna be all overloaded. If you're letting all these people in their house, because like I said, these people that are building, they don't care about the residents. They care about one thing only: how much money they can put in their pockets. And that's wrong. I mean, I'm a Chelsea resident. I was born in this city, you know? And I wanna stay in this city. And I have a beautiful home. My neighbors have beautiful homes. They invest all kinds of money into keeping their houses perfect looking. I wanna keep it that way. It's zoned for a two-family. Let's keep it as a two-family. We don't mind a nice two-family. Nice families moving in. We don't care. But now you wanna add three, four. It's just crazy. So I'm hoping that you side with us and try to make the best and say to us, you know, say to yourself, "Oh, maybe these people, yeah, we should do that." But stick with us, because we're the guys that vote for you. Thank you very much.
Hello, everyone. My name is Diane Cullinan and I am a resident at 26 Warren Ave. We bought property there 10 years. I've owned two other properties in various areas in Chelsea and I've been a resident in Chelsea for 40 years. I very much support the petition against the zoning on Warren Ave. We have a lot of traffic now as it is and it, like Billy said, is a very nice street and we just, we really wanna keep it that way. Increasing the zoning, it's not a good idea and we hope that you support that. Thank you.
Hi, everyone. My name's Patricia O'Flaherty and I'm a lifelong resident of Chelsea. I actually grew up on Eleanor and I've been on Warren Ave for over 20 years. I just wanted to say that, you know, short and sweet, that I think there needs to be a balance between housing and quality of life, because our street is actually very busy. There's multifamily homes, there's single-family homes, there's a whole condo building. And it's actually very busy and I just think, obviously, the residents are looking like, yes, it's quality of life. It is more noise, it's more parking. It's just, we know. I mean, we all grew up here in Chelsea, so Chelsea is a busy, can be loud place, because it's, you know, it's a tight 1.8 square miles and there's a lot of people here. So I just wanted to say, really take a look at everything before you just say yes to everything. And that's all. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Caroline Ellenberg. I'm a resident of Chelsea. I live at 107 Shortlip Street, number three. And I came to speak about something later, but saw that this was on the meeting again. And I just want to express my concern about the idea of densifying the land, our properties here in the second densest city in the state, without having a community process about what the reason we are doing that for. Our land is our value as a city and open space is at a premium here. I know that regionally, we have a housing crisis and that we need to build more housing. I am not sure that Chelsea, which is already so dense, is the place to be increasing housing, unless we are very intentionally doing it as affordable housing. I think otherwise, what my concern is, is that housing rates are gonna go up because the developers coming in are building higher-end housing than the surrounding houses and are replacing housing with higher-end housing. And I'm not saying for sure this happens, but I think it's a very real possibility. And I think if we're not having a conversation about why we are giving our land away as a city, then I find it very concerning as a resident and community member. And, yeah, please consider that. Thank you.
Seeing no further speakers on the R1 district, I will now continue that hearing to future. We will now open up the R2 district. Changes to the minimum lot size in the R2 zone for per dwelling unit for one to six units and the 3,500 square feet with the first 1,000 square feet for each additional unit, but not less than 5,000 square feet total. Change the minimum lot size per unit for seven or more units to 3,500 square feet for the first unit and 950 square feet for each additional unit, but not less than 10,000 square feet total. Change the minimum open space per unit for 100 square feet. Any public comments on the R2 proposed changes? R2 only.
Hi, my name is Maria Taxera. I live at 81 Library Street and I'm here in support of the change. Right now, where I live, my house sits on 2,100 square feet. I own 83 and 85 lot, which is 6,900 square feet. And based on the current zoning, I'm only able to put one unit there. And so, it, to me, that doesn't make any sense, where my side of the street is R2 and directly across the street from me, where 35 units went up, 100-plus units went up further down the street is R1. It just doesn't make any sense to me. And I don't know what the answer is, but as a homeowner, I don't see the fairness when it comes to myself as a homeowner trying to change what that area looks like, because it doesn't look good right now, being a huge empty lot. As I said, if you're standing in the empty lot, Marlborough Street is behind it. You can see three triple-deckers and a garage. So to have a current zoning where I can only put one unit there as a homeowner doesn't make sense to me, especially when I see developers developing, like, on Suffolk's, for example, less than like 2,500 square feet, a three-decker going up. It doesn't seem like there's any fairness as a resident of Chelsea. And so, I am in support of this change, because it would allow me to put more than the one unit in this huge empty lot. And so, I thank you for putting it back on the table and I thank you for your leadership. Thank you.
Any other speakers on the R2 change? Seeing none, I will continue that public hearing on the R2 amendments. We'll now go on to the next public hearing to establish a mixed-use overlay district in the area bounded by Everett Avenue, MBTA right-of-way, and the Chelsea Everett border.
Thank you, Mr. President. City Manager Tom Ambrosino. This proposed change, as well as the proposed change to the Pollo Campero site, of the two zoning changes before you that the city submitted and is recommending for your approval, these are both areas where we are trying to create mixed-use development opportunities. The area that, this mixed-use overlay district area is the triangular industrial area that currently exists right now, between Market Basket Site and the Stop &amp; Shop Site on the Everett Line. And the goal is to create an opportunity for mixed-use development there in the hope of spurring some development of, I think, what we would all agree, are some very underutilized sites that exist in the city. The change, that, the next change we have proposed and the only other one we are asking for approval tonight, is the change in the block, in the commercial block that currently houses the abandoned Pollo Campero site. And again, we are asking to rezone that to be consistent with the zoning on the other side of that block, which is retail business. This area really seems to be consistent with a retail business area and rezoning it from purely residential to a retail business would allow for a mixed-use development on that site, with commercial on the ground floor and residential above, similar to what we see in the other retail business of the downtown. So I'm asking the council to consider both of those changes. I will tell you that both of these changes were favorably recommended by the planning board on two different occasions. And both of them that were last before you actually had majority support on this council. And so I ask for your continued support tonight. Thank you.
Mark NATO, 41 Breakwater Street. Can we ask questions or no? All set. Thanks. Seeing no further speakers, I will now close the speaking portion on the mixed overlay district. We'll now open up the public hearing for the adding the definition of an electric vehicle preparation and repair and amend Section 34-300 by adding electric vehicle preparation and repair allowed in the industrial district. If there's anyone here who'd like to speak in favor or against this change, please state your name and address.
John DeBries, Director of Permitting and Land Use Planning. I'm here to speak in favor of the proposal. It will provide us with a new technology, a new use with advancing technology and will also provide us with a substantial number of jobs and a clean environmentally correct use. The planning board did vote to approve, recommend approval of this and I have a letter that I'd like to provide to you, so that it's part of the record. I'm speaking in favor of the proposal. Thank you.
Keith Lasek here on behalf of Rivian Automotive. They're an electric automotive company who is seeking to occupy the property currently at 25 Griffin Way. The property is currently 25,000 square feet on a 1.25 acre lot. The company is strictly electric vehicles. It's not a hybrid. So there are zero emissions, very eco-friendly, and we're looking for your support with this amendment.
Seeing no further speakers, I will now close that portioning of the public hearing. We now move on to our final public hearing on zoning amendments. That zoning change is a designation of the parcels located at 115 Park Street, 105 Park Street, 12 Essex Street, 1 Ellsworth Street, and 37 Congress Ave. Changing it from the present residential 2-zone to a business retail zone. If there's anyone here to speak in favor, please approach the microphone, state your name and address. Seeing none, we'll now close the public hearing on the zoning change of the parcels as described. We'll now move on to the next portion of our meeting. We have the public speaking portion. Anyone who has any business in front of the city council can approach the microphone. Please state your name and address. You will have five minutes.
Good evening. My name is Jaceni Alfaro. I'm a Chelsea resident at 12 High Street and school committee also representing District 8. I had made this available just in case that I run out of time. So, good evening, Mr. Chair, Vellaneda, and members of the committee of the city council. Today, I'm here to testify on behalf of reclaiming our vote rights. Our community is welcoming in a sanctuary city that embrace all immigrants. Data from 2020 suggests that there is a population of 39,196. It is the 37 largest in the city of Massachusetts and the 1,008 largest in the United States. With 236 immigrants living in the Suffolk County, yet half of them are eligible voters, are ineligible voters, with the significant indicators like this to show that we are surely representing the vast majority of the large minority of residents in the city of Chelsea. Furthermore, in Chelsea alone, there is 10 public schools with an enrollment of 5,936 students that we serve from pre-K to 12 grades and yet probably represent a mixture of multicultural students. And I have put some information that you can also check on your own. And in addition to the temp schools in the public district, we are housing in our backyard grounds the Shore Educational Collaborative, Excel Academy Chatter School, and the Phoenix Chatters Academy, without counting the private school of St. Rose. These educational parents and students, I'm not gonna go into all of these details, because you can review on your own and you're gonna see how many students we have enrolled on each of those schools that I have put in, that I have mentioned. My opinion as a school committee member is that I'm underrepresenting students. I'm underrepresenting parents and that they should have the right to vote and that we should honor that, because you're the only one, a city council, that have, right now, in your hands, something to support parents and students. We have a legislation that is at the state level and I know that this was also mentioned on the charter and some of us voted in favor. And as a former member of the charter, I also would say that I still, if I were back, I still gonna support that. Thank you. Good evening.
Hi, thank you for having us. The right to vote is something that is ingrained in the backbone of the United States. From a young age, we're told that our voices matter, that one day we will have a say in how things in this country turn out. We have lived our lives here and the decisions that affect our country, city, and state deeply impact us. How do we, how do we help those who are most affected? Those who are not seen? Immigrants leave all they know for a chance at a better life and a better future. We know that citizens are able to vote on matters in the US and that they help to keep things going, like parts of a machine. But just because you don't see other important pieces of a machine, doesn't mean they're not there. Everyone deserves a chance to decide how their lives will be impacted, because they are here now, helping to propel America forward. They can continue doing that with the ability to vote. Immigrants have as much of a right to vote as anyone else in this so-called land of the free. I think it's time we lived up to that name. Thank you.
Well, if they're under 18, we can't ask. Please remind to state your address when you state your name for the record.
My name is Emily Manjivar. I live on 17 Lawrence Street. Look around you. The streets you walk on daily and buildings you pass by for work were all constructed by immigrants or people of color. The restaurants you go to food for and the culture everybody loves to take part on, but still will never be able to speak at the table. Immigrants have contributed so much, so much things in Chelsea and yet they're not allowed to vote in the local elections. According to the five-year ACS in 2019, there were approximately 12,457 non-citizen residents living in Chelsea. These non-citizens could be your neighbors, your gardeners, the people your kids go to school with, et cetera. Yet for some xenophobic, idiotic reason, they cannot contribute to anything that's political. Truly, as a city and a daughter of a resident who can't vote, we can do better. We are better. So take this into mind. Chelsea's a sanctuary city where we help and protect immigrants. It's a city I'm proud to say I lived in and I was raised in. Let others say the same thing when they vote for the local elections and didn't need to show their proof of residency. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Daniela. I am here for the all-resident voting. Immigrants should have the right to vote, because they make up a large part of this country. US immigrants make up around 26% of the country's population and not giving them the right to vote in local election is stripping them of their voices. Studies shows that allowing immigrants to vote can give them voice, making their city government and school communities be more representative and responsive. Also, immigrants are very hardworking and voting should be a right for them, especially since they help the US economy. Immigrants should also have the right to vote, because they pay up $11.6 billion in taxes each year. They should be able to, they should be able to have the right to vote if they're helping the US economy. Plus, they have made this country very beautiful with all their music, food, clothing, culture, et cetera. They have helped this country more than anybody else. Immigrants should be called aliens just because the government calls them that. We should have respect for all human beings in the United States. They have come to the United States to live a better life and have a better future for their families and kids. Thank you very much.
Hi, my name is Emile. Immigrants in the country are a marginalized group with little representation in government. The US is oppressing immigrants the same way that the British oppressed early American colonists. Colonists preach no taxation without representation. And today, the country has failed immigrants. They can't represent themselves by voting for leaders the same way that citizens can. Not allowing immigrants the right to vote is a silencing of more than 15,000 voices in this city alone. Immigrants would vote for representatives who would have the best in mind for them. Without the immigrant vote, we only hear the voices of people who speak for them, against them, and the citizens who can sleep soundly at night without ever having to think about them. The voices of those Americans speaking in their place are nowhere near loud enough right now. Regardless of citizenship, that is, these people are in the country, they pay taxes, they benefit the country, and they're affected by legislation made by everybody but them. Taking back the vote should not be a controversial debate. It is a human right being ripped out of immigrants' hands. Foreign-born folks have been demonized time and time again, used as the forefront of political campaigns, and have their culture belittled. They have been labeled job-stealing, disease-ridden rapists, who are ruining the country. They came here for better lives and this country has done nothing but take advantage of them. Immigrants deserve the right to vote. They deserve... They deserve to have their voices amplified, and they deserve to make change in government. Thank you.
I would be helping translate. Tengan muy buenas tardes.
Have a good afternoon.
Mi nombre es Olga Armaz. Y ya soy residente pues de acá de Estados Unidos y vivo acá en...
Dirección.
La dirección. Mi dirección es 115 Bellingham. Y pues me siento muy agradecida por la oportunidad de estar aquí frente a ustedes en esta tarde para...
Good afternoon. My name is Olga, and I live in...
115 Bellingham.
115 Bellingham Street in Chelsea, and I'm very grateful to be here in front of you. And I'm a resident of the United States.
Pues me siento muy contenta de que me han dado la oportunidad de estar en esta hermosa tarde aquí con ustedes participando y pues queriendo ver cómo participar para obtener ya el derecho del voto.
And I'm really happy to be here today with you, and I'm here to see how can I reclaim the right to vote.
Y pues también soy candidata para la ciudadanía y me gustaría participar pues desde ya.
And as a future candidate for the U.S. citizenship, I would like to start making that right to vote right now.
Gracias.
Thank you.
Remember any other speakers?
Good evening. My name is Rochelle Cromwell. I live at 58 Garfield Avenue in Chelsea. I am in favor of giving residents in Chelsea that don't have documents or immigrants voting rights in this country because I don't think we're looking at the bigger picture. I have to let you know, if you don't know, the opposition is getting a lot larger against Black and Brown people. As I speak to you right now, they are making laws, changing laws, to repress, suppress the voting rights of minorities and immigrants. And folks of color, open your eyes, it's a bigger picture that I'm on board with this for. Because before you know it, before you know it, the rights that we have fought for for so long and all the people that fought alongside us for the right to vote will surely be in jeopardy. So, we need to have a larger voice amongst immigrants, amongst Brown people, because, like I said, the opposition is at work, working very hard to take away what we fought for for years. And I believe that we should give other people the opportunity, the same opportunity that we had as minorities. And let's take up the fight for the opposition because there are laws being made as I speak that are suppressing our vote, and I am 100% wholeheartedly for this. Thank you.
All right. Hi, everyone. Roberto Jimenez, 40 Eleanor Street. The United States is and always has been a nation of immigrants. Chelsea in particular is a great example of this incredible history, with wave after wave of immigrants further strengthening our city, our Commonwealth, and our country for decades. For the first 100-plus years of our nation, there was no category of inadmissible person, and the first restrictions in 1882 were driven by fearmongering about Chinese workers, sparking a series of laws over the next decades that favored white Europeans while restricting immigration for what we today call people of color. I just ran up the stairs, I'm sorry. Turning now to the idea of restricting the vote to citizens only, I just want to highlight that at least 22 states or territories allowed for non-citizen voting during the 19th century, and that it was anti-immigrant sentiment in the early 20th century that led to the elimination of non-citizen voting little by little by 1926. Therefore, the system where only citizens vote is less than 100 years old. We have residents of Chelsea who were alive during a time that non-citizen voting was allowed in some states. And so, now that I've established that non-citizen voting is not a new idea by any means, I want us to ask ourselves, what is voting? To me, voting is having a say in the rules that govern our community and in how our community's taxes are spent. And to that, I offer two points. First, non-citizens, even undocumented folks, pay taxes like the rest of us. The Congressional Budget Office estimates that between 50% to 75% of undocumented people pay federal, state, and local taxes. Estimated that they pay about $7 billion into Social Security every year, even though they're not eligible for it. They also spend money at stores, paying sales taxes. And second, I think almost everyone here, hopefully everyone, would agree that non-citizens are part of our community here in Chelsea. At least 30% of our residents are non-citizens, meaning that without the right to vote, likely over a third of our city disproportionately the poorest and most marginalized among us, have no say in how we administer or govern Chelsea. This is not democracy, and we should not stand for it. More specifically, parents of Chelsea students are disproportionately more likely to be non-citizens. And because of this, those who have the biggest stake in our school system outside of students, the parents of these students, don't have a voice in who governs those schools. As a school committee member, I think it's crucial that we listen not just to our citizens, but to all of our residents, and especially to our parents. I fully support the resolution that Councilor Vega Maldonado is proposing. I will hopefully be introducing a resolution to the Chelsea School Committee as well, supporting this. I hope that you will pass this home rule petition and work with our legislators to ensure that it passes there. Thank you.
Hello. My name is Ellen Rovner, and I live in Somerville, Massachusetts. But I am the fourth generation in my family to have been born and raised in Chelsea. Over 100 years ago, my great-grandparents came, and my grandparents came here escaping oppression, escaping poverty, escaping persecution, and looking for opportunity. They contributed a lot to the city. They were laborers, they were peddlers, they were teachers, they were business owners, they were veterans, they raised families here, they supported organizations here, institutions here. Chelsea was home and is home in very many ways. They did not, two of my grandparents became citizens, but the other two could not read or write. None of them spoke English when they came here, and some of them never learned to speak English. They were resident, they were called resident aliens. When I remember learning that, I thought, oh, how strange. They're part of the community. They've been part of the community for, at that point in time, over 50 years, and they were still called resident aliens. So, I'm here to speak about that I think all people, all immigrants, who contribute so much to this city and to the larger society deserve to have a voice. I've heard oftentimes people say that, well, in order to vote, you have to earn it. You have to earn it. You have to become a citizen. You have to earn it. Well, on a federal level, at a state level, perhaps that's true, but on a local level, people are earning it every day. They're earning it every day. They're raising families, they're working hard, they're educating their children, and they're taking, they're working really hard just to survive. And I think that in this city, which has a long history as a haven for immigrants, as a gateway city, it's time that the city is not just a gateway where people pass through, but a city where people build lives and build homes and have a voice about their children's education and about the people they trust to represent them in the city. So, thank you very much.
Hola, buenas noches. Mi nombre es Joseline Vázquez.
Good evening. My name is Joseline Vázquez.
Vivo en Chelsea, 74 Chestnut Street.
I live in Chelsea on 74 Chestnut Street.
Soy residente de Chelsea y hoy lunes 21 de junio quiero decirles que me gustaría poder ejercer mi voto.
I live in Chelsea, and today on the 21st of June, I would like to tell you that I would like to exercise my right to vote.
Porque mi voto puede ayudar a hacer cambios en las escuelas donde mi hija y muchos niños asisten a su aprendizaje diario.
Because my daughter goes to school here, and my vote can influence the schools where my daughter and many other children are going to learn.
Pero pasa algo que mi opinión no es escuchada porque no puedo ejercer mi voto.
The problem is that my opinion is never heard because I can't exercise my right to vote.
Entiendo que hay leyes por las cuales estamos aquí pidiendo de su apoyo.
I understand that there are laws, but that's why we're here, to ask for your support.
Y me gustaría que en verdad nos tomen en cuenta a familias como la mía.
And I would like you to consider families like mine.
Por ejemplo, yo desde que llegué a este hermoso país he pagado mis taxes desde que he pagado mis taxes y en verdad me gustaría que me tomen en cuenta.
For example, since I arrived in this beautiful country, I've paid my taxes, and I would like to be counted.
Gracias. Feliz noche.
Thank you. Good evening.
Good afternoon, everyone. My name is Natalia Restrepo, and I live on 16 Cottage Street. I have been married to my husband Oscar Diaz for almost five years. He is a native Honduran who came to the city of Chelsea at the age of 11. He attended the Williams and then graduated from Northeast Metropolitan Vacationist School, where he gained the skills in carpentry, and uses it today for his personal business in demolition, landscaping, and cleanouts. Unfortunately, Oscar only has a TPS and is in the process of his naturalization. I think it's important for my family that meanwhile he waits to be a citizen, that he is allowed to vote for the decisions and changes in the city we live in. Chelsea is his home, where he works, pays taxes, and where our son will attend school. So, please, everyone, I ask for you to please pass this bill for the future of the residents and families of Chelsea. Thank you so much.
Good evening, council. My name is Celeste Williams. I live at 227 Chestnut Street. This is a cause that's very dear to my heart, only reflecting on the reality that I'm ancestor, well, my ancestors were brought over here in slave ships. And they had to fight for the right to vote in this country. They were brought here not by, on a ship freely to come looking for a free life. They actually helped build this country. And knowing the struggle that they fought so hard for, so that other groups of people that came in could afford those same rights. First of all, Black men got the right to vote before women. That told us a lot back then. Women stood up, they fought for the right to vote. But most of them that fought for the right to vote was legal in this country. They were born in this country. So, I understand that this fight is a hard fight, and I am not taking vote, voting for granted. It's one of the things that's dear to my heart, only because when I was 18, in my community, the vote was suppressed. We did not have the right to vote in our elected officials, so therefore, we didn't have a voice. All I'm asking tonight is to be considerate and think about the hard work we've done in this country, not only for people who were brought over here, but for people who have came here with an honest heart, wanting to work hard, wanting to build their family, and wanted to be responsible citizens of the United States. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Christina Alonso, and I'm a resident of Boston. I'm here to read the testimony of Tamara Rushevich. Dear Chelsea City Councilors, my name is Tamara Rushevich, and I'm a third-year PhD student in Population Health Sciences at the Harvard TH Chan School of Public Health. Prior to beginning this PhD program, I worked in Washington, D.C., providing outreach services to individuals experiencing homelessness, and as an epidemiologist at the Chicago Department of Public Health, analyzing data revealing the stark health inequities in fatal and non-fatal opioid overdoses. My primary interest and motivation in pursuing a career in public health has always been rooted in social justice, anti-racism, and health equity. While many are familiar with the social determinants of health, which are the ways in which factors, including education, income, working conditions, and housing, influence one's health, less commonly discussed are what Daniel Dawes refers to as the political determinants of health. These are factors including voting, government, and policy that shape the social determinants of health. I will focus on the connection between voting and public health. On the surface, it may not be obvious how voting rights are connected to public health. However, the right to vote, and specifically, the ability to express one's voice and elect officials that represent one's interests, are intimately connected with both one's own health and the health of one's community. Studies have shown that voting is associated with better self-rated health. Specifically, individuals living in states with lower levels of inequality in voter turnout reported better overall health. This can be understood in a couple of ways. One, voting provides individuals with a sense of community connection, social cohesion, dignity, and self-confidence. Two, voting allows individuals to influence policies and laws that directly influence health or indirectly influence health, for example, influence the social determinants of health. Relatedly, voter suppression limits the ability of an individual or community to influence laws and policies that will affect their health. Voter suppression has long been a vehicle for structural racism and oppression and a tool to use, used to marginalize communities. Often, these communities whose votes are suppressed, be it through gerrymandering, voter ID laws, voter purges, intimidation, and other tactics, are also the communities that experience discrimination and oppression across other systems, including education, housing, and healthcare. In the case of the city of Chelsea, allowing all residents to vote regardless of citizenship status will allow every resident a chance to express their voice and advocate for policies that address their needs. This will contribute to a healthier and more equitable society. Denying non-citizens the right to vote will further marginalize and ignore the needs of a vital community that was particularly hard-hit by COVID-19. Immigrants, and particularly undocumented immigrants, experienced disproportionate high rates of COVID-19. This is due to many factors, including working during the pandemic out of economic necessity, a higher likelihood of working in conditions that are at high risk for COVID, and living in crowded homes. This coupled with the fact that undocumented immigrants are largely denied access to safety net services led to food insecurity, evictions, and the mental health crisis, in addition to illness and death. Allowing all residents of Chelsea to vote is one way of listening to the needs of all community members, including those who were most affected by COVID-19, and will hopefully allow for policies that address those needs and reduce inequities to improve health and well-being. Thank you for your time.
Good evening again. My name is Caroline Ellenbird, and I live at 107 Shirtlip Street, apartment three here in Chelsea. and I live at 107 Shirtlip Street, apartment 3 here in Chelsea. I also work at Greenroots and I'm here representing Greenroots as well as my own... Myself and also speaking in support of the all-resident voting. Prior to working at Greenroots for many years, I taught citizenship classes at the Chelsea... At La Collaborativa and preparing immigrants for their naturalization interview. And one of the questions that is asked in the citizenship test is "Name one right only for United States citizens." And one of the answers is "Vote in a federal election." And so, we would talk about, you know, what is federal? And why can't you vote in a federal election? But what we would really talk about is, well... We would also talk about is, well, what about... Where are these other elections that we can vote in? And here we have the opportunity, here in Chelsea, you all have the opportunity to create this possibility, right? That we hear about when learning for the... Practicing for the citizenship test, to let Chelsea residents shape the city where they live and work and where their children attend school. Chelsea is and always has been a city of immigrants. It's deep in our city's identity. Half of Suffolk County immigrants are not eligible... You know, many Chelsea residents who have lived here for decades are not eligible for citizenship. And half of Suffolk County immigrants are not eligible for a wide range of reasons, could be asylum... They can be asylum seekers, have TPA status, DACA, a whole number of reasons. And it takes a while to become a citizen. Meanwhile, these people have lived here and are part of our community. They're deeply woven in. They are our neighbors. They own businesses, restaurants, homes here in Chelsea, and are active leaders in the community. During the pandemic, so many of our most dedicated leaders in the pandemic response, all throughout the city, at Greenroots and all the other organizations, are not citizens. They stepped up to connect neighbors to resources, met with departments here in the city about how do you connect programs to serve people. They're pounding the pavement now as vaccine ambassadors. They are keeping Chelsea going, making Chelsea what it is today, even though they are not citizens. So, limiting the right of residents to vote directly and adversely impacts environmental justice and public health, as we just so eloquently heard. Chelsea is federally recognized as an environmental justice community. EJ Communities are where high... Where high percentages of residents are people of color, immigrants, low-income people, and those with limited English proficiency. And these communities are at especially high risk of not having their voices heard. This is part of the definition of environmental injustice, right? Is not having your voice heard. And yes, there are many ways to have your voices... Voice heard, and there are many ways to silence voices. But voting is fundamental, right? It's at the core of our democracy, of what we are, of who we are. This is why Greenroots and others fought so hard for the environmental justice legislation that just passed recently in Massachusetts. Again, it was all about making sure people have a voice. So, here again, you have the ability to take a stand on this, right here in Chelsea. So, you are all sitting here because people voted for you, right? And I know that all of you strive your hardest to represent the people in your district or the city at large, depending on the case, and to the best of your ability. So, I urge you to stand behind this system of representational democracy that you guys are all a part of, critically a part of, and vote to enfranchise all residents of Chelsea. Thank you.
Hola, muy buenas tardes, damas y caballeros. Mi nombre es Jaul Hernando. Yo vivo en la ciudad de Brooklyn y en esta hermosa tarde tengo el honor de estar aquí abocando por el derecho a votar.
Good evening. My name is Jaul Hernando and I'm a resident of Brooklyn and I'm here to advocate for the right to vote.
Para mí, como un joven inmigrante y como futuro para este país y para nuestra comunidad, siento que es muy importante y injusto a la vez que como inmigrantes no tengamos el derecho a votar porque tenemos mucho que ofrecer a estas comunidades y a este país y por lo tanto creo que es una injusticia que no permitan que nuestras voces sean escuchadas y que nuestros derechos sean válidos. Se supone que este país es un país libre, soberano. Me entienden? Entonces, creo que todos tenemos el derecho a votar y creo que todos en esta noche estamos aquí abocando porque nuestras voces sean escuchadas. Porque no solo es nuestro futuro, es el futuro de nuestras generaciones.
I'm here to... I'm here to advocate for the right to vote as an immigrant and as part of the future of this country. This is a free country and I believe that the right to vote is part of the right to be here. This is a right that is part of us as a youth and that is part of the future of us as young people. Not being able to vote is an injustice and we need our voices to be heard.
Y primero que todo, pues, les damos las gracias por estar escuchando todas las advocaciones que estamos diciendo aquí en estos momentos y espero que tomen en cuenta y que se pongan nuestros zapatos, que como inmigrantes también todos tenemos el derecho a votar porque somos parte de esta comunidad y ofrecemos demasiado a la economía, tanto como la cultura y lo general en todo lo que estamos en estos momentos. Y estos tiempos son de cambio y si no lo hacemos ahora, no lo vamos a hacer nunca.
Thank you for listening to our voice and these are times of change. If we don't start changing now, we're not going to do it ever. We are the future of this country and we need to participate. Thank you.
Seeing no further speakers, I'll now close the public speaking portion of our meeting. We'll move on to the next item on our agenda, which is the approval of the minutes, regular meeting... Regular meeting minutes of June 7th, 2021. Do I have a motion? Council Brown moves that we accept and file the minutes of June 7th. Yes, Council Vega.
Order in moving to this to a second meeting and schedule a public hearing on it?
The Council Vega is asking that we move out of order the Home Rule Petition, which was in our first...
It's the last item on the agenda.
But it's under new business. So, it's under Section 12, under new business, which is the Home Rule Petition, ID number 21 HR97. What is the motion again?
If we can move this to a second reading and schedule a public hearing.
Motion is to move this to a second reading and move to a... Move to a second reading and schedule a second... A public hearing, rather, in our next regularly scheduled... Or at a future time in the next scheduled, regularly scheduled, um, public meeting.
May I speak on it, please?
You may. I'll allow the maker to... Normally, we don't... We just move to a second reading, but I'll allow the maker to speak on it.
First, I want to say thank you so much for everyone that has come to give and share their experiences. It was very heartfelt to just listen to you guys and so I'm very touched and thankful, so. Muchas gracias por estar aquí y decir las historias. De verdad que me tocó sumamente y estoy sumamente agradecida por todos ustedes. Muchas gracias. In Suffolk County, there are 236,000 foreign-born residents and in Chelsea, 45.4% of our residents are foreign-born, according to the census. This Home Rule Petition will give the right to vote to non-citizens to vote in municipal elections. This means that our friends, neighbors, coworkers, and coworkers will have the right to be represented locally through our elected officials. Non-citizens are wading through a vigorous and laborious immigration process. While they are going through said process, they are still paying local and federal taxes. However, they do not get a say when it comes down to municipal elections. They do not get a say on how their taxes are being spent and they do not get a say in the schooling process their children go to. The United States was founded in the mantra of no taxation without representation, but yet this is what the community is facing. Residents, regardless of their immigration status, should have the right to be represented. All parents should have a say in the school committee meetings and elections. All residents of Chelsea should have the ability to be represented in these chambers. We have heard from some of our community members who live here, who believe in this issue passionately and we owe it to them to fair and due process. Thank you.
Council Brown is asking for a recess of two minutes.
Co-sponsors speak on it?
Council Garcia, typically that we have on a second reading, it just goes right without conversation, but in this case, I'll make the exception and give you a brief two minutes to speak on it because we know that we'll have public hearing and public... And another time to speak on the agenda item. But I'll give you your two minutes.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and I'll make it brief. I want to take a moment to really say thank you to Councilor Melinda Vega Maldonado for bringing this, not for the first, but for the third time. We have seen this motion presented to us many years ago, but also during the charter meeting and it is beautiful to see the public here talk about something that's important and someone said it tonight. This is not only about immigrants. This is about all of our residents and that is the reality. Esto no se trata solo sobre nuestras familias inmigrantes. Se trata de absolutamente todos los residentes de Chelsea. You have all contributed to the social, cultural, and economic fabric of this city and it's not that you don't have a voice, it's that we have not created the platforms for you guys to show your authentic voices. I do hope that the councilors that are here, the councilors who voted against this motion during the charter review process, change their minds and I ask you and I challenge every single one of you, lift up every single one of those signs so everyone here can see them. Levanten todas esas pancartas para que todos los concejales aquí puedan verlas. Porque sí, es hora de reclamar el voto. It is time to reclaim the vote. Thank you so much. Gracias.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
I will now grant, Council Brown, is two-minute recess. We're back in recess. Communications from the city manager.
First communication, new police chief contract. Their council is the five-year contract I negotiated with Police Chief Brian Kais back in 2017, was scheduled to expire next June 30th, 2022. To ensure that Chief Kais remained here in Chelsea, I have executed a new four-year contract with Chief Kais, which will keep him here until June 30th, 2025. There are no material changes in the salary terms. For your information, I have enclosed a copy of the new contract.
Council Robinson.
Communication under suspension. Is there no objection?
We have a acceptance file from the communication from Council Robinson. Moving on to the next communication.
Acceptance of a grant from Metro North Regional Employment Board. Their council is recently... The city received its annual grant from the Metro North Regional Employment Board for the Summer Youth Works Initiative. This grant is in the amount of $337,500 for summer youth employment. Each year, the city flexes this money to La Collaborativa for the use towards its Summer Youth Employment Initiative. This funding paid for approximately 125 summer jobs. In accordance with the Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 44 and 53A, I make request that the city council formally approve the acceptance of this grant. A draft order is attached.
What is wish the council?
Accept and file a communication under suspension if there are no objections.
Council Robinson asks that we accept and file under... Under suspension. We'll have something under new business.
The next... The next communication from the city manager, grant from United Way for Chelsea Eat Food debit card program. Their council, the United Way of Massachusetts Bay and Merrimack Valley has awarded the city another grant for support of the Chelsea Eat Food debit card program. This grant is in the amount of $48,385. Will be used for funding for the final two distributions in July and August. A copy of the award letter is attached. In accordance with the Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 44 and 53A, I make request that the city council formally approve the acceptance of this grant. A draft order is attached.
I make a motion to accept and file a communication under suspension if there are no objections. There'll be something coming up under new business.
The next communication from the city manager, acceptance of the grant from the Metropolitan Area Planning Council. Their council is today the city received official notice that has been awarded a $50,000 grant from the Metropolitan Area Planning Council to implement COVID-safe cooling strategies. Specifically, this grant will be used to provide air conditioning units and assistance on utility bills to low-income residents. In accordance with the Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 44 and 53A, I make request that the city council formally approve the acceptance of this grant. A draft order is attached.
Accept and file a communication under suspension. Will be something coming up on the new business?
And I'll just wait till at that point to make an announcement in that regard. So, under new business.
And we have communications and petitions to the council. We have a copy of a communication received from the Park and Clerk to that Central White regarding traffic and parking commission actions approved at May 11th, 2021 meeting.
What is wish the council?
Accept and file a communication under suspension if there's no objections.
Seeing none. That order is moved. We had the... As part of the communication, it was the authorize the permit of temporary outdoor dining parklets in the downtown area to designate five... Five-minute parking zones in the downtown area. Next items on the agenda, we have unfinished business. We now have the first zoning amendment introduced by Councilor Avellaneda regarding amendment number one. It is the establishment of a mixed-use overlay district. What is the wish of the council?
This is in regards to the overlay district. This is in regards to the overlay district, which is...
This is a motion, I need a motion to adopt of the mixed-use, creation of the mixed-use overlay district, which would be the Everett Ave corridor with the, between Everett Avenue, the Stop &amp; Shop, and the Route 16, and the MBTA zone.
I'd ask for a roll call vote on the adoption if there are no objections.
There is a motion to adopt the mixed-use overlay district in the Everett Ave corridor. The city clerk will call a roll. We need six votes for it to approve. Just the Amendment Number One, which is...
Just Amendment One?
Which is Amendment One.
Just on the overlay district?
Amendment Number One.
Okay.
And Amendment Number... Yeah, so just Amendment Number One.
Right now, it's Amendment One, okay. On the motion, if I may?
On the motion, you may.
Reason I'm in favor of this motion is the fact that the matter is where the Stop &amp; Shop is located. Part of that is in Chelsea and the rest is in Everett. And Everett, by right, they can build whatever they want to build over there. And if we don't do an overlay district, the possibility of them developing and us ending up with a parking lot. So in order to keep the plan fairly a little bit level, I support this amendment. Thank you.
The yes vote would be to adopt, the no vote would be not to adopt.
Correct.
Councilor Vido absent, Councilor Avellaneda?
Yes.
Councilor Recupero?
Yes.
Councilor Garcia?
Yes.
Councilor Vega Maldonado?
Yes.
Councilor Robinson?
Yes.
Councilor Rodriguez?
Yes.
Councilor Taylor?
Yes.
Councilor Lopez?
Yes.
Councilor Brown?
Yes.
And Councilor Zabett?
Yes.
Ten in favor and none opposed, one absent. The motion on Amendment One is adopted for the mixed use.
Okay, we have the motion to adopt... Right, we have, on the agenda, it is Amendment Number Five, a designation to change the parcels from residential two, R2, to retail business on certain parcels in Park Street, Essex, Ellsworth, and Congress. This is the area pertaining to the Pollo Campero site in Park Square. A yes vote would allow the change to create this to a mixed use from the R2. Do I have a motion?
Make a motion to adopt under roll call vote.
Council Brown asked that we adopt Amendment Number Five on a roll call vote. A yes would adopt it. We would need six votes in order to pass.
Councilor Vido absent, Councilor Avellaneda?
Yes.
Council Recupero?
Yes.
Councilor Garcia?
Yes.
Councilor Vega Maldonado?
Yes.
Councilor Robinson?
Uh, yes.
And Council Rodriguez?
Yes.
Councilor Taylor?
Yes.
Council Lopez?
Yes.
Councilor Brown?
Yes.
Councilor Zabett?
Yes.
Ten in favor and none opposed, one absent, and the amendment carries.
Next item on the agenda, the zoning amendment introduced by Council Recupero and Council Avellaneda regarding Amendment Number One, changing the R1 district per dwelling unit in total density of one to two units to 3,100 square feet, but not less than 6,000 square feet. And we have Amendment Number Two, amendment to table of principal use to change through a three-family from N to special permit. Councilor Brown?
I'd like to make a motion to continue on a, for public hearing, on the both of them?
The, so you are asking us to continue with the public hearing? Motion to...
On both of them, R2 and 12.
Well, the R1 right now in front of us, we have an R1, motion to continue the hearing. The public hearing was continued earlier tonight. This is just to...
Continue the amendment.
Continue the amendment.
To the same time.
To the same time. I have not set a date yet. We'll look at the calendar for the fall in conjunction with the city manager's outreach plan. Okay, now, motion was under suspension?
For Amendment One and Two.
So that, yes, one and two. Okay. We're moving on to agenda item ID 21Z9, an amendment, zoning amendment introduced by Council Avellaneda regarding Amendment One, amending the table dimensions of regulation in the R2 district of one to three units to one to six units, former apartment renamed seven-plus units. Amendment Number Two, amending the table dimensions regulations in the R2 district per dwelling unit density of one to six units to 3,500 square feet, not less than 5,000, and seven-plus units to 3,500 square feet, but not less than 10,000. Amendment Number Three for the R2 would be amending the dimensional regulations in the R2 district, the minimum reusable space requirement to R1 six to 100 square feet and seven-plus to 100 square feet. Councilor Brown?
Make a motion to continue the public hearing?
Motion under a suspension to continue the public hearing on the zoning amendments for R2?
Yes, sir.
Seeing no objection, that moves. It will be in conjunction with the R1 discussion, with the, working with the city manager.
Amendment One, Two, and Three?
One, Two, and Three.
Do we need three on that one? I didn't...
It was open.
Was that the other?
No, just, ID 21Z9 was continued to a public hearing. And there were three amendments all related to the R2 district.
Okay, I just had notes for one and two, but...
All right, just to be clear. Yep, just to be clear. Okay, now you have the final one.
So now we have the ID 2, item number ID 21Z10, zoning amendment introduced by Council Avellaneda regarding Amendment One. Section 34, amending Section 34241 by adding the definition of electric vehicle preparation and repair. Amendment Number Two, amending Section 34300 by adding Section C, commercial uses of electric vehicle preparation, repair, and allowed subject to the issuance of a special permit in the industrial district and not permitted in any other district. What is the wish the council?
I make a motion for roll call?
To adopt?
To adopt on a roll call.
Motion to adopt on a roll call vote. We need eight votes. Council Brown, inquiry through the chair.
Yeah, tonight.
We had a public hearing tonight, and we had the representatives of the company speak. And we also had the city manager and the, and John the priest. Okay, I apologize.
Councilor Vido absent, Council Avellaneda?
Yes.
Council Recupero?
Yes.
Councilor Garcia?
Yes.
Councilor Vega Maldonado?
Yes.
Councilor Robinson?
Yes.
Council Rodriguez?
Yes.
Council Taylor?
Yes.
Council Lopez?
Yes.
Councilor Brown?
Yes.
And Council Zabett?
Yes.
Ten in favor and none opposed, motion adopted.
The motion carries. We'll now move on to second readings. Order introduced by Council Avellaneda regarding appropriations of funds of $15,000 in free cash to the FY21 Housing Community Developing Contract Services for the appraisal. Do I have a motion?
Roll call?
I make a motion to adopt under roll call.
Motion to adopt the $15,000. Inquiry through the chair. This is regards to a specialized appraisal for the peers along Marginal Street.
Okay, Judy Garcia. Okay, Council Vido absent, Council Avellaneda?
Yes.
Council Recupero? Council Garcia?
Yes.
Council Vega Maldonado?
Yes.
Council Robinson?
Yes.
Council Rodriguez?
Yes.
Council Taylor?
Yes.
Council Lopez?
Yes.
Council Brown?
Yes.
And Council Zabett?
Yes.
Ten in favor and none opposed, one absent, motion adopted.
We have a next second reading, order introduced by Council Robinson regarding approval of costed items in the collective bargaining agreement negotiated with the New England Development Association, Inc., Local 93 Police Patrol Officers Memorized in the Memorandum of Agreement for the period of July 1, 2020 to June 30, 2021, and June 2, 2021. At this time, I'll allow Council Vega Maldonado to recuse herself.
And a motion?
Do I have a motion?
I'd ask for a roll call vote on the adoption if there are no objections.
Motion to adopt by Council Robinson on a roll call vote?
Council Vido absent, Council Avellaneda?
Yes.
Council Recupero?
Yes.
Council Garcia?
Yes.
Council Robinson?
Yes.
Council Rodriguez?
Yes.
Council Taylor?
Yes.
Council Lopez?
Yes.
Council Brown?
Yes.
And Council Zabett?
Yes.
Nine in favor, none opposed, one absent, one recused.
We have a, next two orders, items number 21F65 and items 21F6, both relative to the appropriations and improvement of the New England Development Association, Local 93. Council Robinson asked that they both be taken at the same time on a roll call vote?
Yes, on a roll call vote on the adoption.
Both items, both orders, both are related to the contract with the local police officers.
Okay, Councilor Vido absent, Councilor Avellaneda?
Yes.
Council Recupero?
Yes.
Council Garcia?
Yes.
Council Vega Maldonado, recused. Council Robinson?
Yes.
Council Rodriguez?
Yes.
Council Taylor?
Yes.
Council Lopez?
Yes.
Council Brown?
Yes.
And Council Zabett?
Yes.
Nine in favor, none opposed, one absent, one recused. Okay. We have the...
Council Robinson is asking to packet the next items in the second readings?
Yes, so they can be grouped together.
We're gonna group items. Which one?
These are first readings or what?
No, second readings.
Second readings? Okay, sorry. We're going to read the approval of the PEG, the Community Cable Television.
Right, the Chelsea School Department?
Chelsea School Department. The Chelsea Cable Community, Chelsea Community Cable Television is $242,742.29. The school department is $90,000, and the city is $130,000. Council Robinson asks for a roll call vote. On the adoption. Item 21F67.
Council Vido absent, Council Avellaneda?
Yes.
Council Recupero?
Recupero, yes.
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 Council Garcia?
Yes.
Council Vega Maldonado? This on the cable television and stuff?
Yes.
Council Robinson?
Yes.
Council Rodriguez?
Yes.
Council Taylor?
Council Taylor?
Council Taylor, Council Lopez?
Yes.
Council Brown?
Yes.
And Council Zabett?
Yes.
Ten in favor, none opposed, one absent, motion adopted. And then you have...
We now have the order introduced by Council Robinson on the appropriation of the community preservation operating budget. Where 101,631 dollars, or 10% of the estimated revenues, will be for the acquisition, creation, and preservation of space, where 10% or 101,631 dollars of estimated revenues for acquisition, preservation, and rehabilitation and restoration of historic resources, and 101,631,000 dollars, or 10% of the estimated revenues for the acquisition, creation, and preservation, to support community housing, and the 65% of the estimated revenues to budget reserve, which equals into the amount of $660,637, along with the appropriation of the FY22 estimated revenues. $5815,000, or 5% will be used for administrative expenses. Council Robinson?
No objections?
Council Robinson asks for a roll call vote on the allocation and appropriation of the CPA funding.
Council Vido absent, Council Avellaneda?
Yes.
Council Recupero?
Yes.
Council Garcia?
Yes.
Council Vega Maldonado?
Yes.
Council Robinson?
Yes.
Council Rodriguez?
Yes.
Council Taylor?
Yes.
Council Lopez?
Yes.
Council Brown?
Yes.
And Council Zabett?
Yes.
Ten in favor and none opposed, one absent, the motion is adopted.
Now, we're going to move on to the salary reserve packets, which were the items.
11G to 11-0.
11G to 11-0.
11G?
Or on your, on the top right-hand, you'll see the item 12-2, all the way to 12-BB.
If you want to read the amounts.
Sure. Items in the agenda, it is ID 21F69, all the way down to item, item number 21F87.
Want me to read the amounts, sir?
And on the right-hand side of the original copies, you'll see item 12-2, 12-4, running all the way to 12-N, all the way to 12-BB.
You want me to read the amount?
Uh, yes, I will read the amounts. We have the amounts of $300, $300 for salary reserve and longevity, $1,825 for the assessors overtime, $7,400 for the personnel department regular salary account, $7,000 for the MIS department regular salary account, $1,620 for the central billing department overtime account, $2,272 for the licensing department regular salary account, $800 for the salary reserve account and licensing department, $2,476 for the Health and Human Services Admin Department regular salary, $1,307 for DPW snow removal overtime account. That's it.
And the motion is...
Motion to adopt on a roll call vote by Council Robinson on a roll call.
Adopt on a roll call vote if there are no objections.
Council Vido absent, Council Avellaneda?
Yes.
Council Recupero?
Yes.
Council Garcia?
Yes.
Council Vega Maldonado?
Yes.
Council Robinson?
Yes.
Council Rodriguez?
Yes.
Council Taylor?
Yes.
Council Lopez?
Yes.
Council Brown?
Yes.
And Council Zabett?
Yes.
Ten in favor and none opposed, one absent, and the motion is adopted.
Motion is adopted.
We have now the free cash.
Free cash, yes? Order for the free cash, there, item 12O on top right-hand. Appropriation of 1,500, I'm sorry, $155,239 to the snow removal. We have free cash in the amount of DBW snow removal, O123-53, for $104,73. We have free cash of $60,824, again, snow removal to overtime account. We have the appropriation of free cash of $85,086 for the fiscal 21 judgment, claim judgments account. Free cash allotment of $86,000 to the parking department for data processing services account. We have free cash allotment of $35,000 for the FY21 Employee Benefits Unemployment Account. We have the city council transfer of $130 of free cash to the FY21 Retirement Contributions Non-Contributory Account. And we have a free cash transfer of $8,467 to the FY21 Employee Benefit Medicare Account. Council Robinson, what is the...
Council Vido absent, Council Avellaneda?
Yes.
Council Recupero?
Yes.
Council Garcia?
Yes.
Council Vega Maldonado?
Yes.
Council Robinson?
Yes.
Council Rodriguez?
Yes.
Council Taylor?
Yes.
Council Lopez?
Yes.
Council Brown?
Yes.
And Council Zabett?
Yes.
Ten in favor and none opposed, one absent, and the order is carried.
Next item on the agenda is an order introduced by Council Robinson regarding the Chelsea City Council give reauthorization of revolving funds for FY22. Those revolving funds include elder affairs in the amount of $1,000, housing community tax title foreclosure revolving account the amount of $100,000, public library revolving account in the amount of $20,000, emergency management revolving account in the amount of $30,000, inspectional services revolving account the amount of $30,000, community schools revolving account in the amount of $100,000, and school department non-resident student tuition revolving account the amount of $250,000. Council Robinson, what is the wish?
Ask for a roll call vote on the adoption if there are no objections.
Council Vido absent, Council Avellaneda?
Yes.
Council Recupero?
Yes.
Council Garcia?
Yes.
Council Vega Maldonado? Council Robinson?
Uh, yes.
Council Rodriguez?
Yes.
Council Taylor?
Yes.
Council Lopez?
Yes.
Council Brown?
Yes.
And Council Zabett?
Yes.
Ten in favor and none opposed, one...
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Uh, we need to take a separate vote on... Uh, we need to take a separate vote on the School Department, not the Non-Resident Student Tuition Revolving Fund account.
We have a order that was introduced, the authorization revolving account for the School Department of Non-Resident Student Tuition Revolving Account, where Section seventy-one F of Chapter seventy-one of the General Laws authorizes cities and towns. This is the amount of two-hundred-and-fifty thousand dollars. Such funds are to be spent only for the purposes directed in provisions of Mass General Law, Chapter seventy-one, Section seventy-one F. This is for the, this is for the.
Revolving account.
Bunker Hill Community College tuition.
I'd ask for a roll call vote on the adoption. There are no objections.
Request on a roll call vote for the adoption of the two-hundred-and-fifty thousand dollars funding of free cash to the Bunker Hill Community College Scholarship, or rather, tuition account.
This is the authorization of revolving account.
Correct.
Council Vido absent, Council Abzaneda.
Yes.
Council Recupero.
Yes.
Council Garcia.
Yes.
Council Vega Maldonado.
Yes.
Council Robinson.
Yes.
Council Rodriguez.
Yes.
Council Taylor.
Yes.
Council Lopez.
Yes.
Council Brown.
Yes.
Council Zabat.
Yes.
Tenor favor and unopposed, one absent, motion adopted.
Motion carries. We have a request for final payment on unpaid bills that were not paid to the vendor from the FY nineteen, FY twenty. The council authorizes the expenditures to fully satisfy unpaid balances. Those amounts equal two-hundred-and-ten thousand, I'm sorry, two-hundred-and-ten dollars to Blanch and Sut for name-planted plaques, Health and Human Services, two-hundred-and-eighty dollars to Chelsea Record for various notices, Legislative Chelsea Record notices, again, for eighty dollars, Police Department, seventy-one dollars, eighteen cents, Thomas McCain for textbook reimbursement, School Department for Security, SVS for door repairs. We had two thousand four hundred and twenty-five dollars and twenty-five cents to Wilmington Trophies for the Brown Middle School apparel, PJ Kennedy and Sons Incorporated Plumbing Services at Chelsea High School and Hook School in the amount of five thousand one-hundred-and-sixty-seven dollars and sixty-three cents, and Health and Human Services, a hundred and twenty dollars for various notices. Council Robinson?
I'd ask for a roll call vote on the adoption. If there are no objections.
Council Vido absent, Council Abzaneda.
Yes.
Council Recupero.
Yes.
Council Garcia.
Yes.
Council Vega Maldonado.
Yes.
Council Robinson.
Yes.
Council Rodriguez.
Yes.
Council Taylor.
Yes.
Council Lopez.
Yes.
Council Brown.
Yes.
Council Zabat.
Yes.
Tenor favor and unopposed, one absent, the motion is adopted. New business.
On the new business, we have an order under to the City Manager looking to creating a Park and Recreation Department introduced by Council Recupero.
Adopt under suspension. If there's no objection, like to speak on it?
Seeing no objection, you may speak on it.
I believe the city should have a Park and Recreation Department. Uh, we paying, we're gonna, we adopted, we paid for a landscaper to pay. So why not let our own park department pay for, for that? It's a good thing to have it. Every other city has a park department. You should have one too. And I believe in the long run, we will save money. Instead of each year paying to landscape every park and to go around doing all the flowers and everything, a park department will take care of that. And I honestly believe that this city needs one, and then in the long run, we'd be the beneficiary because our city park would get cleaned even better than they are now. Because right now, we gotta hire somebody to do it. Why not let the city do it itself? Thank you.
Next item on the agenda is a request introduced by Council Recupero regarding the DBW put a porta potty at Highland Park.
I'd like to adopt under suspension. If there's no objection, like to speak on it?
Seeing no objection.
We have bathrooms over there, but at certain times, they get closed. So I don't know who goes there at night in the park, but it seems that people go there and there's a need for this type of thing there. And it should be there. It should be on a trial basis. You should see how it works. If it works, we keep it. If it doesn't, we get rid of it. Isn't it better to try than not to try at all? Somebody wants to go to the park, it doesn't want to go to a park to where somebody has just done something. So let's give it a shot. If the City Manager and DPW thinks it's the right thing to do, we'll do it. Let it try it. If it works, it works. If it doesn't, we don't do it.
I thought it was too love and too lost and never loved at all. Anyway, I made a mistake. Next order is the City Council hereby accepts and approves the grant by the Metro North Regional Employment Board. Doing business has the Mass High and Metro North Workforce Board in the amount of three-hundred-and-thirty-seven thousand dollars, five hundred, to implement the twenty-twenty-one Summer Jobs Youth Initiative and place one-hundred-and-twenty-five youth in summer employment. Wish of the council?
Adoption. If there are no objections. Ricky, a little quicker.
Counselor Recupero, I think you may have to recuse yourself from this. Again, this is just an acceptance of a grant on behalf of the Summer Jobs Youth Employment Program. There's a motion to adopt on a roll call vote.
Council Vido absent, Council Abzaneda.
Yes.
Council Recupero.
Yes.
Council Garcia.
Yes.
Council Robinson.
Yes.
Council Rodriguez.
Yes.
Council Taylor.
Yes.
Council Lopez.
Yes.
Council Brown.
Yes.
And Council Zabat.
Yes.
Nine in favor, none opposed, one absent, one recused. We have Giovanni.
Was that in?
You skipped it.
Did I skip it? I apologize. Order introduced, well, you seem to have skipped one, item twenty-one, one oh eight. An order introduced by Council Recupero regarding the City Manager looking to how parking tickets are paid and how they are recorded internally outside. Council Recupero.
I'd like to adopt, I'd like to adopt under suspension. If there's no objection, like to speak on it?
You have the floor, Counselor.
Many times, I know how, I'm not exactly sure how these work, how these tickets work, but I get a lot of complaints, and I've been through it myself. If you lose your parking ticket, it's up to you to prove that you paid that ticket. If you can't produce the receipt that you proved that ticket, how do you know, you gotta pay it again? So I would like to know, how does exactly, do they keep records? If you lose your receipt, then you pay cash. If you pay with a credit card, or you pay with a check, there's your receipt. What if you pay cash? So I don't know how it actually works. They must have a record, or they must keep it. Because I always hear it, that it's up to me to show my receipt. When I go back and I say, I gotta pay it, they say, well, how'd you pay it? I paid with cash. Where was your receipt? If I cannot produce the receipt, I gotta pay it again. So there must be a way that if you pay by cash and you lose your receipt, it must show that you paid it. I don't know how it works, but it's happened to me, and it must have happened to many other people. Where they go in, if they pay by cash and you can't produce your receipt, doesn't work, you, you have to pay it again. So I would like to know, just for my own and the people's curiosity, if you lose your receipt, what is, and you paid it, and you don't have your receipt, how do they know if you paid it? It must show up that you paid it. So it might, does it go with the number of your ticket? How does it operate? It must have a system where the city is accounted for the money that you put. So how, how is it? How does it work? How, I've yet to, every time I've lost it, it's happened to me, that I can't produce my receipt because I pay with cash, they say to me, where's your receipt? I don't have it? Well, you gotta pay it again. So it must have a record. It must show when you pay with cash, how you paid it. And if you lose your receipt, it should still be there. So if somebody loses their receipt and it goes back there and says, I pay you, but I can't find my receipt, they could turn around and say, yes, you paid. It shows that you paid, or it shows that it doesn't pay. It must. So I want to know how. Thank you.
Thank you. Moving on to the next order introduced by Council Abzaneda regarding the metro grant from the Metro National, I'm sorry. Now, we are to the Merrimack Valley Grant in the amount of forty-eight thousand three hundred and eighty-five dollars for the public purpose of funding the Chelsea Eats Food debit card program. Do I have a motion? Council Garcia asks that we accept the grant in the amount of forty-eight thousand three hundred and eighty-five dollars on a roll call vote. Clerk, call roll.
Council Vido absent, Council Abzaneda.
Yes.
Council Recupero.
Yes.
Council Garcia.
Yes.
Council Vega Maldonado.
Yes.
Council Robinson.
Yes.
Council Rodriguez.
Yes.
Council Taylor.
Yes.
Council Lopez.
Yes.
Council Brown.
Yes.
And Council Zabat.
Yes.
Tenor favor and unopposed, one absent, and the motion is adopted.
And now, the last order of the night and into the summer. City Council, yes? No, to the AC, AC units. Uh, City Council hereby accepts and approves the grant of the Metropolitan Area Planning Council Board in the amount of fifty thousand dollars to implement COVID safe cooling strategies to low-income residents.
I make a motion to accept by roll call vote.
Motion to adopt on roll call?
Yes.
Any objection to me making a comment from the chair?
No objection.
Again, this is just to the residents to understand, we are accepting fifty thousand dollars. I know that right now, many of you are complaining about the heat and live in buildings that may not have central air and such. The city, this is a fifty thousand dollar grant program. If you make thirty percent AMI, or roughly under forty thousand dollars, you are eligible for a free air conditioner plus three hundred dollars, uh, card, a waiver voucher for your electricity bill. So please contact City Hall, either the City Manager's Office, or three-one-one, in order to get your free AC to survive the summer.
Council Vido absent, Council Abzaneda.
Yes.
Council Recupero.
Yes.
Council Garcia.
Yes.
Council Vega Maldonado.
Yes.
Council Robinson.
Yes.
Council Rodriguez.
Yes.
Council Taylor.
Yes.
Council Lopez.
Yes.
Council Brown.
Yes.
And Council Zabat.
Yes.
Tenor favor and unopposed, one absent, motion adopted. That's all the orders, Mr. Chairman.
Do we have any announcements?
I do.
Counsel Robinson.
I got a, a text from Sean O'Regan from Chelsea Pride. Um, with everything that the city has gone through the pandemic, Chelsea Pride Football has decided to have free, I'll say that again, free registration this year. They can be, they can be reached on Facebook, Chelsea Pride Football and Chair, or email, or email at chelseypridefootball@yahoo.com.
Pass.
To be considerate, when parking the vehicles around the city, uh, there's been a lot of complaints about vehicles blocking crosswalks and ramps. Uh, so please, you know, be mindful and be, you know, think about mothers that are pushing their carriage with babies. I actually called the police on a few cars that have been blocking the ramps. So just be more careful and be, you know, aware that, uh, blocking the crosswalks is, it is, it's not good. Also, uh, the summer starts already. Loud music, parties on the yards, and, uh, loud cars, music is really loud. So we gotta, we gotta think about people who gotta work next day. Some people work weekends, people work holidays, and there's loud music at one, two in the morning. We gotta think about these people. And also, uh, last couple weekends, I heard fireworks. I had the scanner, and they said they went to an address. Oh, we, we just told them to, to keep it inside. So I, I thought there was not, uh, zero tolerance on this. So just think about your neighbors, think about children, elderly people. Thank you.
Council Recupero.
I would like to remind all the parents, they go through Marginal Street, that the basketball courts are open over Ports Park, and that the traffic light does work. So when you want your children to cross over, you can push the button on that light, and the cars will stop for you. So that is a thing that's important, because I see a lot of mothers, mothers with their children don't push the light. They try to dodge the cars. Don't dodge the cars. The purpose of that light is for you, so use it. It's for your safety. Thank you.
Council Brown?
Thank you, Mr. President. I just want to reiterate what Council Lopez said regarding the fireworks. Um, the police have sent us all texts. They are going to be seriously coming out, cutting down on the fireworks. It is a three hundred dollar violation. So please be careful, be mindful of your neighbors, um, be, you know, very respectful. You won't have to pay the three hundred dollars. Also want to congratulate Class of two thousand and twenty-one. I know you had a difficult time, a tough time, but you guys made it. You all have went through the last fifteen, sixteen months. Um, incredible resilience how you made it through, but you should be very proud of yourself. And I also want to wish the rest of the school kids a safe summer, and tell people to be careful. As Council Recupero said, um, please be careful crossing the streets, because there is still a lot of construction going on in our city, especially down on Williams Street, coming from Captain's Row, and coming on its way. Um, so be careful. They are improving our streets. Unfortunately, it's a little inconvenient, and it's a lot of detours out there. Thank you.
Council Garcia.
Very briefly, I think everyone has covered most topics, but my last plug is, if you have not been vaccinated, we still have vaccination sites here. We have some at the Colaborativa, which will be open until the summer, but we also have other sites in the city. And also, if you have not been vaccinated, then there are also COVID-tested sites, COVID-nineteen testing sites available just outside of City Hall. So get tested, get vaccinated, let's continue, and let's not put our guard down. Thank you.
Do we have any moments of silence? Council Robinson?
Actually, for the passing of Miriam Garcia, mother-in-law of Wendy Tobacco, and the visitation will be held at Goodrich Funeral Home, one-twenty-eight Washington Street and Lynn, on Wednesday, June twenty-third, five to eight, and Thursday, June twenty-four, ten a.m. to twelve p.m.
Council Lopez.
Yeah. Detective.
Uh, Council Rodriguez.
Kimberly Cologne.
Will now stand for a moment of silence. We're now recessed. Thank you, everyone.